Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everybody to our regular meeting. Today's Tuesday, October 7th, 2025. First thing, any public input on the agenda lineup? If not, could I get a motion to approve our agenda?
Approve Otten.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Alicia, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yeah.
Landine?
Yes, motion carries. Just want to recognize Timothy Lams for 12 years of service to Lincoln County, as well as Joseph Carlson, who has 18 years of service in Lincoln County. Yeah. Go ahead and move on to our consent agenda. Any public input on consent agenda? If not, can I get a motion to approve our consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Madam Chair.
I've got a motion from Schmidt, second from Otten. If there's no further discussion, Alicia, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes, motion carries. Next, we'll move on to our regular business for today. Got a second reading and public hearing for an ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota, amending section one of ordinance 0904-06. Section one, organization. The airport board shall consist of seven individuals as follows. Two voting members of the Board of County Commissioners, three voting members that are leasing airport property from Lincoln County, and two voting members that are residents of Lincoln County. Commissioner Schmidt?
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. For some time, I just want to enlighten everybody that our airport manager, David, was involved in a very serious airplane accident down in Nebraska where he flipped his plane over and has some crushed vertebrae and some many other injuries, which will keep him out for a couple of months. I think he's been in touch with you. He's very lucky, actually, to be alive because his plane had just been refueled. So it was loaded down with all kind of aviation fuel. And on takeoff, his engine, for whatever reason, quit. He tried to land the plane, but he didn't have much runway left. And he ran off the runway and the plane flipped over. And like I said, he's very lucky to be alive. So David is kind of in rehab right now. Well, anyway, having said that, for the past few months, we have had or I've had several meetings with David and the existing Airport Advisory Board, which has never really been defined of any kind. It's been kind of a loose-knit group that meets periodically without really any oversight or any maybe major agendas. So working with them, and as you know, we have had several conversations here talking about the airport, trying to right-size this airport, trying to make it revenue-neutral so that it doesn't become, you know, a liability to our overall operation or our budget. So we've worked on this. So I have a proposal to amend the current board, to give this board more direction and more insight and help us manage the airport so that it will come to be revenue-neutral. So I am proposing this, that we have a new board composed of four members of the user group. Now, this would be our advisory group that we have now are all users. They all have planes there. They all either own a hangar or they lease space. So there would be four members that would be selected by this group. They would determine who those four members would be. We would have two commissioners that would serve, and we would have one public member. And this board then would operate along with our manager. I got a frown already, and we haven't...
I've... Well, the...
Commissioner, so the first reading was the original ordinance.
Yeah.
The first reading that we had a week ago was to amend it as in the facts and vetting to consist of seven individuals, one voting member, five voting members that are leasing the airport, and one voting member that is registered voter of the county. So if you want to make an amendment to that second reading, you need a motion.
I would like to make an amendment to include four, two, and one.
Okay, so this is the second reading for what was originally proposed in the first reading that was one Board of Commissioner, five voting members of those leasing the airport property, and one voting member who is a registered voter of the county. So you would need to make a motion to amend here at the second reading if you're changing the makeup of that board.
I need to make a motion to amend the what we read what last week?
Yeah, the first reading last week was amending the ordinance to consist of seven individuals, one voting member.
I would make that motion to amend.
Okay.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
You said four. Here it says three on the original board, not four.
So I think what he's proposing is an amendment to what was originally...
Yeah, so this is the origin... If you look on the screen here in facts and vetting, this is the proposed, original proposed amended ordinance going from... And this is my fault. I copied the wrong thing. So I just realized that this is wrong. So this is the proposed ordinance. Seven individuals, one voting member from the Board of County Commissioners, five voting members from the leasing airport property from the county, and one voting member that is registered voter of the county. The original wording and the way it is exists in ordinance now is two voting members from the Board of County Commissioners, three voting members from the leasing airport property, leasing airport property from the county, and two voting members that are residents of the county. And then...
How was it advertised?
As in this facts and vetting.
Maybe we just need a third reading.
It's... Yeah, probably, because I didn't...
Wait a minute. This is not that complicated.
Commissioner Schmidt, can I ask you a question? And maybe this will clear it up?
Yeah.
What do you think about this amendment? Two voting members from the county commission, three voting members that are leasing airport property from the county that are residents of the county, and two voting members that are residents of the county. Would you agree to that?
Wait a minute, hold it.
Because I don't want three people leasing airport property. Maybe two of them are, live from, live in Texas. Who knows?
Well, the way that we currently have it is that all of the members that are on the advisory board live here in Lincoln County. They have planes there, and they have an interest in there. So if you want to go back, again, we can delay. I'm not going to say anything about that. These are things that we have talked amongst ourselves. So let's take a, let's take a rather, to me, straightforward situation, make it as complicated as we can, and then we'll go back and chew on it again. I don't want to make anything... We have worked very hard building support from the airport users that really make our airport run. So rather than trying to speak for them, I will have, I will go back and we will talk about this. But they're pretty adamant in wanting to have a membership on this. So the whole idea is a very simple one. Why not have people that know airports, use the airport, and wants to make it run better, more efficiently, and profitable, be in charge and make recommendations back to the commission so we can okay this? For example, we have 20 acres that we can develop. Do anybody on this board know anything about building hangars or managing hangars or managing airports? And the answer is no. But people do have that. And if they have the input, they make the suggestion, maybe that the commission should build hangars after evaluating the financial rewards of having that, of our owning it versus a private owner. It would come back to us, and we could say, yeah, that would be good. So that's the idea of having a board member come back. Now, where they live and where they are from, I'm hard-pressed to figure out. If there's a good businessman that happens to live in Texas and he can make our airport profitable, I'll hire him. I'll hire him today. So it doesn't have to be that you have to live here or anything like that. So at this point, Drew, I got to ask you, Drew. Now I'm blindsided. So can I go back and can you try to make use? So our first reading called for seven members. One commissioner, one public member, and five airport users. And what I'm offering today is an amendment, amending that by reducing one of the board members that are users to another commissioner. In other words. Okay? So if I say that I want to amend what was read a week ago, that would need a second, and we could vote on it.
Correct. I mean, you need public comment first.
All right, so let me... Let me ask. You want two voting members on the board? And then you said four voting members.
Yeah, four, four members from the airport user group.
Okay, and then one voting member that's a resident?
And one resident or public member and two commissioners. So I'm going to ask for, to amend what was read one week ago, reducing five members from the airport down to four. And instead of one commissioner, we have two.
Okay.
Okay, so can, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay, again, I'm going back to, it's on our agenda of three voting members that are leasing airport property, and now you're saying four?
I don't know where the three came from, Betty. I have no idea. We never ever talked about...
That's our original ordinance. The original ordinance read two members of the Board of Commissioners, three leasing owners, and two citizens. The first reading and advertisement was to amend it to seven members, one Board of Commissioner, five users, and one registered voter of the county. That was what was advertised. So that was what the proposed amendment was. So I'll make a motion to...
Well, I'm not ready for a motion yet. We've got this noticed as a public hearing.
Okay.
So first, I would take any proponents of the ordinance as proposed by Commissioner Schmidt. Next, any opponents. All right, if there are none, then...
Get a look down.
Go ahead.
For the sharp people in town.
I know, I'm that way too.
Linda Montgomery from February, South Dakota. With all due respect, Commissioner Schmidt, I understand your reasoning. But this proposal that, that we are currently looking at, that was published, I printed it off, I have it in front of me, I think is the most fair way to go. The seven, the two commissioners on the board, three voting members that are leasing the airport, and I do, would like the amendment that, that they actually do live in South Dakota and preferably in Lincoln County, and that there are two members of residents of Lincoln County. Now, when we look at the amount of money that we've spent with the airport, with their current board, has shown to me that they should not be in the majority on this board. And I believe that this ordinance that we are, or the second reading, public hearing, I think is the most fair way to have everyone represented. The people that, that you can get as members of Lincoln County, they may know how to build, they may know things that even the people who run it, who want to make sure that their needs are met, but maybe their individual needs are not what the public needs are. And so I would like to stay with what is written here of the seven members, two voting members of the Board of Commissioners, three voting members are leasing airport properties, and I would like it that they do need to live in this area, and voting members that are residents of Lincoln County. Thank you.
Any other input?
Attorney Commissioner Chad Skiles from Canton. Two, two concerns here. One is, I think goes back to a potential legal question on the appropriate notice, which will probably go back to the state's attorney, considering the initial reading was one thing. The second reading for this public hearing is a, is a second thing. Commissioner Schmidt now is proposing, in the way I see it, proposing a potential third thing. So I think there, there could be a potential legal issue with any action taken. Secondly, it's pretty rare that the previous public input speaker and I agree on an issue. But we do this time. I actually like this one the best. The two commissioner, three airport board, two citizens. And here's why. I don't like the lopsided numbers, I guess. On, with all due respect also to Commissioner Schmidt with his amended proposal today of four and one. I think it's important to have two citizens from Lincoln County represented on this board and more than one voice of, for lack of a better way to explain it, an outsider that may have a perception of being, not being a pilot or having much knowledge of an airport could potential add to these meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public input? I'm going to close testimony and commission discussion. I think just for clarity's sake, it looks like there was a mess-up in how this... I don't know if the mess-up ended on the front end or on the way this was noticed for second reading and public hearing. So what I would like to do is take a second stab at this and start over with another first reading and second reading. So for purposes of this, I think what I'd like is just to make a motion and get rid of this and start over.
Motion to table.
We don't, I don't even want to table it. I'm just thinking the cleanest thing to do would be to not do anything right now and just vote, vote it down.
Correct.
If that makes sense. So I'm looking for a motion to do that, if I can get one.
So moved.
Second, Otten.
Got a motion and a second to deny this ordinance or to not approve the ordinance, if I'm understanding you folks correctly?
Correct.
Correct.
All right, thank you. If there's no further discussion...
I'd like a comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
For a long time, we have sat here and listened to people continually complain about an airport. So the idea is to run an airport to make it profitable. Now, maybe you disagree with, all due respect, of all of that kind of stuff, and you can look at it. But it is a business. A business is designed to what makes the best business decisions. So if you have individuals who are users, they understand that. If you look at the quality of the people that are willing to serve on this board are extremely successful businessmen, and they have tremendous amounts of experience. To me, that makes sense to put those people in charge of an organization so that organization can grow, prosper, and show a profit. I'm not too concerned about whether or not you, right now, the public, is going to be part of it. It can be, attend every meeting. But keep in mind, this is the FAA. We're trying to grow this thing. We're trying to get it approved so it may have an instrument approach. We're trying to do that. And we need the best qualified people that we can find to serve on this board. So we'll be back. I'm sure this will be voted, will vote it down. We'll be back. We'll talk to the group, and we'll come back with a recommendation again. And we'll see if we can't find a way to move this airport forward instead of just sitting here now waiting longer to develop those 20 acres, which, of course, would have provided us with a great deal of income. But anyway, I'm done with my rant.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Schmidt, I don't think this has anything to do with that. I think this has to do with the publishing of this under a, the second reading. And I think we need to go back and be clean because this is not what we're voting on, is what was published according to what Linda and Chad both said.
I would agree with you.
Okay, so we're just, I don't think we're doing anything of what you're saying. I think it's just the fact that we need to be legal and clean and to keep us safe from lawsuit.
All right, I'm going to go ahead.
Madam Chair, ma'am.
If you can be brief, yes.
So I appreciate Commissioner Schmidt's efforts to bring this issue to the forefront. Commissioner Schmidt, what I'm going to support is the question that I asked you earlier. I'm going to support seven individuals, two voting members of the county commission, three members that are leasing airport property from Lincoln County that are also county residents, and two voting members that are residents. And the reason I think it's important for those people that lease property from the airport to be Lincoln County residents is, just like you said, it's, it's an issue of making the airport, hopefully, revenue-neutral. And so it's going to be important for property taxpayers, for those people to be property taxpayers so they understand the pain that regular, ordinary, everyday folks are going through. Because if you lease property from the airport, you're not going to want to vote against your own economic interests normally and pay more money in hangar fees. And I appreciate that you have, it sounds like you've already recruited some successful business people. But I don't care what these people's backgrounds are. I care about the quality of their ideas. And so hopefully, we can work together to make sure we get these folks going and get a good airport board put together.
All right, Alicia, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Is it no vote? The vote to kill it?
The vote...
Or is the motion to...
Motion is to kill the...
I'll vote yes. Thank you.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes, motion carries. All right, we'll move on to item two on our agenda. Consider a motion to approve the 2026-2030 road and bridge plan from the Highway Department.
Morning Commissioners, Jared Narum, Assistant Highway Soup. Here in front of you, this is a formality that we do every year. Present a new five-year plan. This gets approved by the commission, sent off to the DOT for their approval. With this, this is what grants us or gives us the right to apply for big grant money for bridges. Without a five-year plan, we don't, we don't qualify to do that. So basically here, just to give a general breakdown of what we've put together for the next five years. Looking in fiscal year '26 here, we have bridges that we're going to get preliminary engineering on. And I know one year here for the five-year plan, I believe we had a member from Lincoln Township that was here complaining about this bridge and how all the traffic goes around since it's a weighted bridge. And that one has finally come to the forefront where we believe we're going to be in the money on that to be able to get some engineering done. We got a federal replacement that's going on that is at zero cost to us being federal. We have an ER mitigation site, which is Lake Alvin. That is planned. We're hoping to go bid on that this fall. And all these items in here were, were approved in the '26 budget, by the way, also. And four, we have another ER mitigation site of channel realignment to work on. Micro-surfacing down on 152 down here that we had overlaid back in '23, did a base stabilization and overlay as part of the detour route for '46. Also, we have a roundabout in the, in the scheduling for next year. That is at 116 and 105 intersection north of Lenox. The other category here, this is general maintenance and paving, our own asphalt for the county forces. Any questions on '26?
Got you.
All right. '27, we have a bridge for federal removal. This bridge sits on a, on a township road. You could call it no-maintenance road. And nobody's able to cross it for about 10 years now or so. So it's a free cost to us to get it removed. We have three bridges that we're going for replacements, to apply for replacements. We have one that we're going to apply for a preliminary engineering on. We have another structure that we're going to be doing, cast-in-place or pre-cast box with county forces setting that ourselves. Micro-surfacing, looking at what we had paved last year up by Sioux Falls in our FDR up there on 269th. We have a reconstruction of road, potentially, hopefully, down on County Road 143 down there. Big chunk of change. But hopefully, hopefully, we have some grant money on that to help out. Again, the other is county forces, county paving, asphalt costs, all that. Questions on '27? Fiscal year '28. We have a couple bridges in here that we're applying for replacements. That one is that one on 117 that was back that we're applying for this year or for next year. And also another one for replacement as well. FDR base stabilization. We have County Road 111. We have some on County Road 140 and 146. Member FDR, as we grind up the asphalt, turn it into a gravel, and then we inject a stabilizing agent in it to make it harder, and then we pay a repave back. And then we have chip seal happening in '28, shown by the purple there. Questions on '28? '29, we have two replacements. Two bridge replacements there. Another one, we have another bridge for, we're going to apply for a big grant replacement. Micro-surfacing, as you can see there. FDR base stabilization, again, County Road 148. And again, the other is for our own asphalt costs, stuff like that. Questions? Just hit me up whenever you got a question here. I'm just going to keep rolling. '2030, bridge replacement. This sits over top of Beaver Creek here, just northwest of Canton. We have a 106 and Western intersection that we're looking into doing something with that intersection. Talks need to happen with the city of Sioux Falls, all that, before any of that happens. We have a mill and overlay project that we're scheduling. This one here, that's, it's, it keeps getting shoved back year after year because we're trying to figure out the best situation or what the best remedy to fix that road is. It's asphalt that's over top of concrete, and it keeps buckling. So, and again, the other is for our county forces. Any questions on that? And for the public here, there is copies right here if you want those, okay?
Jared?
Yep.
For 2026?
Yep.
The road over by Lake Alvin where there's no guardrail and that steep ditch? I know we had some folks from the public come in to talk to us about that.
Yep.
And I know that we had decided that we weren't going to do anything until 2026 with, there wasn't a temporary fix to that.
So the problem that you have is if you want to spend $150,000... So the problem that you have is if you wanna spend $150,000 or $200,000, whatever that cost would be, I don't know. I don't have the numbers.
Right, but it's only for that.
And putting guardrail now, it's all gonna get tore out when we do this project next year. So.
And which project is that on?
That is the number three up here.
Okay.
Right here. So, and what's going in place here, right now currently, there's two metal culverts down there in the bottom. What's gonna be going in there is a triple nine-by-nine cast-in-place box that's gonna be taking place. Hopefully, we're mitigating the road overtopping is what we're hoping to do with this structure, with the increased flow. And with that, to bring it up to DOT guidelines, the, your two-to-one or three-to-one slope, the box has to be so long that's gonna be in there to give you that bigger of a clear zone, if that makes sense. So when looking at a spot like this, when it's done, that whole entire opening, when you come down through Lake Alvin there?
Yeah.
That whole opening is going to be part of the project. Because the current pipes sit down, they're so deep, 20 some feet deep, you have to go so far back just to be able to get down that far, that that whole area is gonna be encompassed in on that project. So when you're done, you, by rights, with the box being so far out there, you don't have that anymore. Because you have a better clear zone.
All right, thank you. That answers my question.
Makes good sense.
I try. So, but yeah, with that, just have the chair sign, I suppose a public comment maybe on this.
Yeah. Any public input on the road and bridge plan? All right, if not, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second Otten.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, Alicia, will you call it all?
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes, motion carries. Item three, motion to authorize the chair to sign a resolution to modify the county highway system.
Yes, so back in '23, Lincoln County and the city of T came to an agreement on road jurisdiction. We have up here roughly the feet on 469th Avenue, which is County Road 111. The city of T took over 2,660 feet south of 272nd Street. Well, I'm not sure which, what it's called, 4th Street or something like that in T, where they took over that half mile for their development going on out there. We also have on 469th, which is 271st, the old County Road 106, a stoplight at T where they're taking that mile. And that's where that roundabout just got placed up there, north of T, up to there. So basically what this is, is, oh, on 470th, the road by the airport, County Road, the old County Road 113, they're taking that as well. And in this agreement, we had decided that we would give them so many years of maintenance on the road. We paid to pave it. We'll pay to put a preservation on that road, all that. That half mile and, or that County Road 113 that went by the airport, we'll put a micro seal on that one, so that one's fully theirs now. The other ones were still, as part of the agreement, we are maintaining those roads until something happens. If they put turn lanes in, do any of that stuff, then it's basically, you're, you're taking it away from what currently is there. So basically what this is, now finally, the DOT has given the resolution to be signed by the chair and sent back to the state for their vote on whether or not to move it, remove it from our system and put it to the city of T. Formalities.
All right, anybody have questions for Jared? Any public input on this agenda item? All right, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, Alicia, will you call it all?
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes, motion carries. Next item, Jared, authorize chair to execute a resolution removing a bridge structure?
Yes. '24, last year, we had a structure that qualified for big grant money through the state. That was replaced and in its place was a cast-in-place concrete box got put in. Through the engineering, all that, that structure does not qualify for the 20-foot rule anymore through the state. And the rule is anything that is an opening of 20 feet or greater is the county's, anything under 20-foot falls on to the townships or municipalities, what have you. It just doesn't qualify for big grant money through the state. So basically, this structure here was replaced. It does not qualify for that anymore, so we are removing it from that list of eligible structures.
All right, anybody have questions for Jared? All right, any public input on this agenda item? If not, can I get a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Erns, a second from Otten. If there's not any more discussion, Alicia, will you call it all?
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes, motion carries. Next item, our auditor, Sheri, good morning.
Good morning, Sheri Lund, Lincoln County Auditor. I'm coming today for two precinct changes. We're doing one because of HB 1130 that takes effect January 2026, which would make the cities and the schools have elections on the primary and general election day. They do have the choice to combine with the county. The precinct change will allow the auditor's office to better facilitate combined elections. The second request changes due to growth in a precinct size. The precincts that will see changes is Sioux Falls 211 and 212. Sioux Falls 216 will have a new Sioux Falls precinct, 219. With all the combined changes, approximately 4,000 voters will need to be notified of the polling location change and approximate cost of $2,500. I can go through and read the resolution if you would prefer for the new changes or if you've had an opportunity to look at the information that's attached, if you have any questions regarding it.
Are there any commissioners that would like it read? All right, then you don't need to read it.
Thank goodness.
Anybody have any questions for Sheri?
I don't have a question. Thanks for bringing this. I just hope that we can do as much as reasonably possible to make sure folks know where their new voting locations are.
Well, we are going to put it out with as much as, I'm gonna put postcards out, I'm gonna put it on the website. We've got this meeting, it'll be in the minutes. Tell your neighbors, tell your friends. You know, the one, the one good thing that I like to push all the time is the Secretary of State has the VIP portal. So I always recommend anybody, just because the, at one point, the ballot will be on there so you can see what your ballot looks like. Always look at that, make sure your information is correct. You may have changed it without realizing you changed it. So it's always a good idea before election season starts to check that VIP portal, anyway.
Very well, thank you.
Other questions? All right, if not, can I get a motion to approve the auditor's boundary changes? I've got a motion from Schmidt, a second from Commissioner Otten. Any further discussion? If not, Alicia, will you call it all?
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
You know what, though? I forgot to ask for public input.
Public comment.
My bad. Any public input?
Go ahead. Does it change any districts?
You mean like legislative district?
Right.
The only thing it's gonna do is 211 and 212 here, see how currently they've got the two stripes going down? We're going to make that, it will change to school districts. So 212 will be one school district, because right now they're two different school districts.
Of legislative?
No, nope, doesn't change any of that.
Thank you.
All right, with that, any other public input? All right, Alicia, I'm sorry, can you recall that rule?
You got it. Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes, motion carries. Next, you have a motion to allow building superintendent to advertise an invitation to bid Lincoln County admin building lighting upgrade. Good morning, John.
Good morning, Commissioners, John Romble, Building Superintendent. So I'm here today finally to discuss and request to go to bid for our major lighting upgrade to this facility, so this project does not include anything in the old courthouse. And basically, if you remember from last year's budget process and also then the spring's information that I gave out, is we were looking at replacing all of these fixtures that are currently fluorescent into an LED fixture. We were given some grant money of about $75,000 to perform this project. At the time of budget process last year, it was estimated that it might cost close to $190 to do all of the fixtures in the admin side of the building. Some of them have been upgraded to LED, but that's, those numbers are also figured into here. And basically, kind of what's driving this is, of course, everybody's switching to LED. So finding the hardware to support the fluorescent lighting, especially like this room that has dimmable fluorescent lighting, has got to be very expensive. So an example of that is above Alicia over here, that light fixture has not worked for a couple of years because that's about a $250 ballast. And I can purchase the whole fixture for that cost. So as they continue to go out, and we've lost quite a few, like in some of the other offices, we've been, rather than upgrade and buy the ballast, we've been switching over the fixtures. So this would do the whole building. Understanding the way, when Drew and I drew this up, if we choose not to fund the whole project, I'd like to at least do all of the occupied spaces and, and, you know, then a lot of like the mechanical rooms and the mailroom and stuff, and the vaults and stuff like that that aren't continuously occupied, we could, we could at least use the grant money towards that. But ideally, I would like to do the whole project, just because it's just the way of the future, you know? There will always be expenses until we make this transition.
All right, anybody have questions for John?
On these lights now, when you put the new ones in, are they, do they last a lot longer?
Yes, well, it, like any, any device, you'll get your ones that might fail. So, for instance, I think at the highway shop now, which is, we've occupied for eight years now, I think I've had to replace about six LED fixtures, I suppose. Another cost savings is, is I'm doing a full flat panel fixture, so it won't be as, won't get as filled with bugs as some of the others, so I, you know, which currently we clean the bugs out about three times a year, and I shouldn't have to do that with the new fixtures.
With the new, they're supposed to be energy efficient. What's, what's kind of the cost or what's the savings do they figure?
Typically, it should pay for itself in electrical savings in about eight years. We've kind of got a little bit of a hybrid thing going on here right now, so I don't know if it'll be a full, or it might be longer than eight years to have a full payback, but...
Other questions? All right, any public input on this agenda item? If not, can I get a motion?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, Alicia, will you call it all?
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yep.
Landine?
Yes, motion carries. Next, John, we have a motion to remove budget authority. You're just moving the years here?
Correct.
All right.
Because of the tight timeline now between now and the end of the year, it'd be pretty difficult for a contractor to get this done and have it billed out to us to make it, you know, flow for this budget year '25.
Okay.
So all I'm asking is, is we, we remove the budget authority from this year and add it to my budget for the '26 budget.
Was this in the budget that was approved?
It was not.
For '25, it was.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're just shifting it. Okay, gotcha. Anybody have questions on that? All right, any public input? If not, Alicia, will you call it all?
Need a motion?
Yeah, well, I guess I do need a motion. Thanks.
About a move to approve.
Thanks, Commissioner Erns, is there a second?
Second.
All right, very good. All right, now Alicia, will you call it all?
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes, motion carries. Next, we need to change the date and time of the October 21 board meeting that we had scheduled for a night meeting. Go ahead, Paul.
Yeah, so I just come before you today, Paul Anderson, Commissioner, Admin Assistant. The issue with the 21st meeting is the auditor needs a claims, needs to have the claims approved on the 28th, and we won't be able to do that on the 21st. There are no public hearings that are scheduled for that evening meeting, and the, and the board will be meeting in the evening. That could, because the board will be meeting that evening in Sioux Falls with a joint meeting of the city of Sioux Falls, so if you, the request would be to do a meeting in, yeah, sorry, go ahead.
Why doesn't October 21 work?
The claims. Claims need to be processed on the 28th.
Okay, so we can't do that on the 21st?
Correct.
And then we can't just cancel the meeting, I'm assuming, because we have to have them approved by the end of the month?
Correct. They need to, yeah.
All right.
Paul, I got a question.
Sure.
If the claims have to be approved on the 28th, and we have a meeting, albeit up in Sioux Falls on the 28th, can't we just recess when we're done with the city of Sioux Falls?
Yeah.
And then reconvene for about five minutes as Lincoln County, albeit we're up, we're up there in Sioux Falls, but I don't see that as a problem. We just reconvene, pass a motion, or we don't even do motions to approve the claims, do we? Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's part of consent.
Maybe I should know that. [laughing] So we just do a motion, and then we gavel out, and we're done.
Mm-hmm.
And then we don't need to do like umpteen different meetings. I mean, I get it that maybe we feel like we're imposing on the city of Sioux Falls, but for crying almighty, they can let us use their chambers for five more minutes to approve some claims, right?
I believe we can do that. I don't know if there's, we can do that. And then I'll confirm how the agenda will have to look. But we, we can...
That sounds simple. Commissioner, I totally agree with that.
But I mean, I get it.
So we'll just, we'll just change the location of the meeting?
Um...
And make it on the 28th?
That's a question. Does it have...
So you want, you don't want any other business on that meeting, then?
No.
Otherwise you have, you only want the claims on there for the 28th.
Yeah, just the 28th. Just the meeting. Just the claims.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's fast and over and done.
Can I get a, any public input on this? All right, if not, then can I get a motion to change the date and the location?
Move to change Sioux Falls on the 28th of October, to approve claims.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Alicia, will you call it all?
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes, motion carries. All right, next we have an opportunity for public comment for items that are not on our agenda.
Good morning, Linda Mon, got me a February soft Dakota. Little distant, different topic for me, but I wanted to tell you that because of the Beloit Bridge being closed from Fairview, you drive through Newton Hills. Beautiful, beautiful area. Saw seven deer this morning coming and one turkey. But what I would like us to maybe look at in the future is that road, the Newton Hills Road. Going south from Canton, what I've noticed now that I'm driving it so much, is that road is wavy. I don't know if you've driven that, but it's like, sometimes could be a control of the vehicle issue, because it is so wavy. I mean, it's like, you're in a boat.
It's a great motorcycle road.
It is a great motorcycle road. I, yes, we have ridden that. But I'm a little concerned about the condition of that road. And I would like the, the commission to ask the highway department to take a good look at that. And now that, you know, with Beloit Bridge being closed for, what I've heard, maybe till Christmas, that's gonna get a lot of traffic. And I do have concerns of that road. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment today? Any other public comment today? All right, if not, any commissioner reports?
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
As you all know, the MENS President was passed in special session to be built in Sioux Falls, nothing in Lincoln County, thank God, and therefore, Governor Roden just this morning announced the Correctional Rehabilitation Task Force members, and of those residents in Lincoln County, the Lieutenant Governor, Tony Van Heisen, will be chair, and also including from Lincoln County is Senator Ernie Otten and Senator Sue Peterson, along with others.
All right, thank you. Any other reports?
Madam Chair?
Yep.
The Governor's Office of Economic Opportunity, of which, wow, I think Senator, our Commissioner Aaronz made quite of a comment on, anyway, it's an honor to serve on that, and they have commissioned a study about a year ago, in which they looked at every community in the state of South Dakota and evaluated their ability to sustain growth. And they looked at county governments as well, to how well they support growth, be it ag, non-ag, commercial, industrial, whatever. Having said that, Lincoln County remains probably one of the prime spots for individuals to look, because of their close proximity to Sioux Falls, but also the transportation system, our infrastructure, our road system. All the communities in Lincoln County are looked at, some have a higher priority than others. But I mean, it's been very interesting to see how we're still right there blessed by being in the location we are. One of the trouble spots that I must say has arisen in our discussion as a board, is whether or not we continue to welcome growth, or are we looking at, looking at growth as something that may not be as desirable for some as others? But that's just an observation, just to share with you, and I'd be happy to bring that information and put it out sometime and let everybody just see where their community sits, because it's very interesting. And that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other commissioner reports today? All right, if not, did we need an executive session, Drew?
Yes, Madam Chair, under 125 to sub 1 and 125 to sub 4.
All right, can I get a motion to that effect under 125 to sub 1 and STCL 125 to sub 4?
So moved. Otten?
Second.
I've got a motion from Commissioner Otten, a second from Commissioner Aaronz, Alicia, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes, motion carries. Come out of executive session.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second.
Authorized.
Alicia, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes, all in favor of adjournment, say aye.
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 Carried.